You please stand for the pledge, Mr. Moudry, which means.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the land of the United States, and we are in the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Over and welcome, Mr. McConnell.
Yes, Chair, Mr. Switzer.
Present.
Mr. Meadows. Mr. Woodbury.
Present.
Mr. Weinfield.
Here.
Ms. Alsteg. Yeah, Ms. Bradley.
Here.
Sir, McConnell, Mr. Kozinski.
Here.
And Chair Hunt-Brocker.
Here.
All right, we have a call.
Next, we have approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair. Support.
Mr. Switzer and Mr. Moudry.
Yes.
All those in favor, voice vote please.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, thank you. Approval of the minutes of April twenty-second.
So moved.
Support. I'm sorry.
Aye.
Mrs. Switzer and Ms. Bradley, support for the discussion.
Yes, Chair.
Yes.
Under the section of the minutes where it says who's going to do what, just program here. It did not reflect my service as president.
Some things are just assumed.
Page six.
Page six. Any other corrections, comments? We entertain a motion for approval of the minute as amended.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Kozinski, second by Ms. Bradley. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. All business, Mr. McConnell.
Return by township board case number PSL twenty-two-four dash three, special land use permit request for motor vehicle leasing and rented business for Johnson's Enterprises LLC, located at twenty-eight eighty-eight South Chrysler and Lansing.
Yeah, I'll speak to this one, thank you everyone. The, so at the boards meeting, the township boards meeting on Monday, May sixth, so last Monday, this request was scheduled for decision, discussion and action in front of our township board. There was an issue related to the phrasing of the condition, one of the conditions that was placed on this approval was reworded. And really that issue, as I noted in my memo that I emailed the memo out and I handed physical copies out to everyone here, and I have shared this with the applicant as well, that there is miscommunication between our members of our planning staff about that condition. And there was just general confusing at the board level frankly, about the, what the condition was and what was happening. So the board acted to just send it back to the planning commission to resolve that. So I can report that the condition is resolved is in the same language that it was before. But upon further review of the project, our team has decided to classify it a little bit differently than than before. So really the classification, the SLUP is for vehicle sales leasing and service facility. That's section eight point six two of our ordinance, zoning ordinance. And then there's the original write-up was for referred to outdoor storage, which is section eight point four-three. Now, our ordinance does define outdoor storage, and I share the definition in the memo, but really it's related to outdoor storage of building materials, sand gravel, other, that kind of thing for long-term storage. And that really does not represent the proposed business very well. And it's also doesn't really align with how we've treated other similar businesses in the community, actually namely the Michigan Cat projects on on, wherever they are at, Millard Highway in South Canal. So to reflect that better, what I've done here in the memo and in your motion, I've revised it to refer to still the vehicle sales leasing and service facilities ordinance, but then also the, which is a specific use category and as well now also have added the outdoor displays and sales category. And what that does really is it still provides a township some protections in terms of limiting the the size of the display area of having it set back from the road. But it's all, but in turn it provides some flexibility to the applicant to have the outdoor space, which the outdoor storage section is specifically prohibitive in terms of where that location we, so if you refer, you can see on both sides, what the outdoor storage would do is really, this is kind of an unintended consequence of re-reviewing the project with new eyes. It would have wiped out that entire, basically the frontage of both sides of the property where they're showing their equipment staging area, because the outdoor storage would prohibit anything really in front of the building on both frontages. It would limit storage to a very small area in a side yard. So with this new context, that's how we reviewed this project in a new context, and I've updated the the motion and the conditions to reflect that. And the one thing I would do also, so I've got in the in the memo here, the revised motion just referring to the outdoor displays and sale area have added a couple of conditions. So the conditions are the same as they were when you approved this on April twenty-two. I just added a note that the site plan has to be revised to demonstrate compliance with that twenty-foot setback. And the only reason I mention that is there are several lines on that page, we just want to have that labeled. And that really goes arm-in-arm with the next condition, which is that the project should be required to receive administrative site plan approval. That's something that would happen, I just wanted to kind of put that on the plan so that it's very clear to the applicant what the next step is, and it's very clear what happened at this meeting, that they got their land use approval and they'll move on to this administrative step of reviewing the site plan. And then that we would have to, that administrative site plan would happen before the township issues a building permit or issues a certificate of occupancy for the building to house the new use. So with that being said, the applicant is in the room, if you have any questions for him, I can answer any questions about how this, how we got to here. If the planning commission is amenable to this to this avenue, we would have this on the next available board agenda to reconsider approval of that SLUP.
No questions.
Okay.
So this is not for action.
It is for action, yeah, provided a motion and then it's on the second page of that memo from today.
Peter, I don't have a copy of the memo.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Again.
Thank you.
So Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make the motion.
All right.
I move that the planning commission recommend to the Delta Township Board of Trustees approval of the special land use permit to establish a vehicle sales slash leasing and service facility with an outdoor display and sales area as requested by Johnson's Enterprises LLC as described in case number PSL dash twenty-two-four dash oh-three for the following reasons, of which there are three, with the following conditions of approval, of which there are three, three, three.
There are four. Four. Yeah. I'll support.
It's been moved as commissioned or final and supported by Commissioner Weinfeld. There will be discussion.
Okay. Member Switzer.
Support.
Member Meadows. Member Woodbury.
Support.
Member Weinfield.
Support.
Captain, Member Bradley.
Support.
Colonel supports Vice Chair Kozinski.
Support.
And Chair Hunt-Brocker.
Support.
The motion to carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And of the hearing.
Next up.
We have case number SP.
Gentlemen.
We have case number SP twenty-four dash oh-three, site plan review, a proposed twenty-one-hundred-and-forty-piece square foot expansion to the existing sixty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-six square foot building. A proposed forty-eight-hundred-square-foot sandblasting building, the customer's parking lot expansion.
Thank you, Mr. Woodbury.
Thank you, so before the planning commission tonight, we have a site plan review for Michigan Cat, which is an existing facility located at Millard Highway and Canal. The project first came before the planning commission, I believe in around twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, when they established their use. At that time, they got a special land use permit as well. One of the last acts that Gary did before he took medical leave was determined that this was going to be a minor amendment to their existing SLU, which does not need a action from the planning commission or township board, such that the use is staying the same, you know, it's just getting slightly larger. So as you can see, we have an area here, the proposed parking lot is going to be in this area. The expansion to the building is going to be in this area, and that's the main building, the new sandblasting building is going to be over here. So staff is recommending approval with stipulations, we can go through the standards of review. So the proposed element provides for proper development, roads, easements, public utilities. We have not yet had comment from Eaton County Road Commission, however, as they aren't proposing any new curb cuts, I don't believe that they will really write any comments. Going forward. You can see some miscellaneous comments, a photo magic plant would be required for the site plan review, so they would have right one for administrative review going forward. Parking calculations for their entire site weren't included, and then parking lot landscaping calculation should be added to landscaping plan. You can take any questions, the applicant is here, or if you have any questions for staff.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Prepared to make a motion?
All right, Mr. Kozinski.
I move that the Delta Township Planning Commission approve the preliminary site plan for the proposed Michigan Caterpillar building expansion as illustrated on site plans prepared by Kim Lee Horn, project number two-six-eight-six-one-seven-zero-zero-two, last date of revision, March twentieth, twenty-twenty-four. And there are five associated conditions.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Kozinski and supported by Member Bradley for a good discussion. Mr. McConnell.
Member Switzer.
Support.
Member Woodbury.
Support.
Member Weinfield.
Support.
Member Bradley.
Support.
Colonel supports Vice Chair Kozinski.
Support.
And Chair Hunt-Brocker.
Support.
Motion to carry.
Thank you guys.
Other business and no other business? No other business to come before us, correct?
No, I know.
All right, public comments, here none. Planning director comments?
That's me, acting planning director comments. The, okay, yeah, we've been busy here, the, just a couple of follow-ups on recent planning commission approvals, the board. So stemming from your April twenty-two meeting, the board did then approve at its May sixth meeting, the Riverside Church expansion. So that's finally, finally not as in we dreaded it, but finally done. And then Jiffy Lube has been through the process, they're approved, so both of those projects will move on to, or Riverside will move on to the site, the staff level site plan, and Jiffy Lube will move on to their, they're coming back here for the site plan, right? No, they do administrative, okay. So we'll see the site plans for that soon, but we'll keep you in the loop when those get approved and as permits are issued. We did, if you remember back to, I think it was the fall where tailgaters came through this group, with the proposal, we have received a couple of different permits, or a couple of different applications, one for site plan, one for a land division. So those just came in on Friday, we're going to dig into those and have more information for you soon. Whisper Winds were in receipt of a site plan for Whisper Winds, it's phase one of the Whisper Winds condos, which are on the west, south side of Saginaw, west of Nixon. And these have been planned for a long time, but the plans just came to us. It was a result of a consent judgment, there have been like nine amendments to the consent judgment, one of which was that is the recent McLaren project, but the consent judgment on this project requires an administrative site plan process, so you will not see that plan, but we'll be taking it through our administrative site plan. But it's eighty-three total units and it's a mix of detached and attached, and we can send the plan along just for informational purposes for your next meeting packet.
Where exactly is that located?
What's that?
Where is that located on the property?
Ten, it's what, west, it's west of the current residential develop, development that's there.
Okay, it's not, it's not between the McLaren and the existing.
Right, it'd be west of what's been built, yeah.
All right, thank you.
We'll send a map, that'll make a little more sense. Just point to say, you guys know Matt McKernan, he resigned last week, so he won't be with us anymore. So Dave and I are your planning team, we will get a job posting on the streets here soon to bring another person on, because there's more work than than just the two of us, so we'll have, we'll get that out there soon. If you know anybody, obviously, please send them our way. We did, the township hired two new code enforcement officers recently, they started last week. And the reason I bring it up is we're just trying to refresh our approach to code enforcement. It's, there are, in some areas has been a little lacking, so we're trying to kind of reinvigorate that process, and it's not so much that we want to go write a lot of tickets, it's just kind of getting more eyes on the street and having a more kind of comprehensive approach to our code enforcement challenges that are out there, and having a systematic approach to visiting certain areas of the community more often. So we have two guys, right before we had one, we had one longtime code enforcement person, Kelly Figurito, that had started the program and she worked here for around twenty-plus years. And so in her place, we've got two people that are kind of divided between rental housing. Um, and so in her place, we've got two people that are kind of divided between rental housing inspection and code enforcement. They're being cross-trained to do both. Um, so what we're hoping is that we can, um, as they get their feet under them, have them visit different areas of township, whether we divide it up by quadrants or neighborhoods or whatever, but really to get the eyes on the street and start to attack some of the, we've had some lingering issues and then just some general deterioration that needs more regular visits.
So Kelly is gone?
Kelly did retire, yeah.
Okay, so these code enforcement people will be working out of engineering?
No, they work actually out of our building department. Yeah, so, and they're being, because of, because the reason that is, is because they are, they're also going to be our residential or resident, um, rental inspectors. So they're learning that, if we have two people, they do not have a history in code enforcement. Um, one of the gentlemen that we hired has been on the other side, has been a leasing agent for apartment for multiple family housing. So it, it, there are some, some good connections there. Um, and then we actually were able to promote from within and we, uh, promoted Anton Woods, who's been with our facilities out of the Parks Department up to this position. So that's always exciting when you can be able to promote from within. I think that's all I've got for now. I'll try to provide more robust updates in the future.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, just one quick question on the, uh, the Jiffy Lube. If you recall, there was quite a amount of a discussion from the neighbors about, uh, the proximity to residences and that kind of stuff. Uh, was there discussion and, uh, general agreement, uh, with the board uh, to take into account the comments regarding lighting as a screening and, and that sort of thing, to insulate the neighbors as much as possible?
Right, the comment or the condition related to lighting stayed, no, no conditions were eliminated in their approval. So there, there was a condition about lighting. And I think it was fairly vague, but left kind of more to the, our discretion to, to get a robust plan as possible. Um, but no other, the, the residents that were here at the public hearing did not come to the board, um, discussion. And they were, they didn't require anything in excess of what was required by the planning commission. So we haven't seen a final plan on that, but we will get that and ensure that they're, um, providing the buffer, at least minimum required.
Planning Commissioner comments.
Move to adjourn.
For.
And moved and supported by Mr. Schweitzer and Mr. Winefield.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
By seven minutes.